All right, thank you everybody for being here. We're going to get this back rolling here. Okay, um, my name is Jamie Lostrman. I am part of the East Brunswick High School PTA and I'm also the liaison to the PTA Presidents' Council. All these lovely ladies who are here sitting here are all PTA presidents or part of their schools and virtual PTAs, so they're going to help us run right now. Thank you to everybody for being here as well and supporting this, the men today. So I'm going to be a little bit about the PTA first and then we'll get started with introductions from the candidates and our questions. There are, we're going to do the three-year term candidates first and then we're going to do the one-year terms afterwards. Okay, so welcome to our second PTA meet, the Board of Education Candidates Night. As you may already know, the PTA is a national organization comprised of parents, teachers, and staff, whose main goal is child advocacy. It's the largest and oldest child advocacy group in the country since its inception in 1897. You may see PTA members throughout your school selling spirit wear, organizing press parties and fundraisers, but this is only a sliver of what the PTA is responsible for. Canvas hours were spent behind the scenes, often unnoticed. If you're grateful for the universal kindergarten, that was due to the advocacy of the National PTA. If you're grateful for child labor lodge, national school lunch programs, juvenile justice system, school safety, and arts and education, those were all PTA initiatives. We conduct annual public policy agendas, which outline policy priorities and recommendations for Congress and the Health Institute Canvas exchanges. We promote open communication and understanding between parents and local schools, and all efforts serve to enhance and maximize the education of every child. PTA is also sponsor assistance to teachers in classroom settings, and those fundraisers you've seen are for supplemental experiences in the schools. Our intent is to always support family and school social interaction and provide a non-biased forum for sharing info on issues that impact our children. Across the country, many PTAs are holding meet the candidate events so that parents and voters can make the most informed decisions, because what better way is there to advocate for our children than by ensuring that those on the Board of Education are of the finest character and bring the best experiences to make decisions for our children, staff, and our community? The PTA is in capacity as an organization does not endorse a specific candidate, although in our capacity as individuals and voters, we are also using this evening tonight to make our own informed decisions. Our intent is to continue this event moving forward, and we're grateful to the township, for the parks and recreation, our mayor, and this year to EBTV for broadcasting this event. We also thank you all for being here and being a part of this. To our candidates, we thank you for seeing the importance and partnering with us and being here, and we hope that, um, that you'll ultimately be elected, and when you get ultimately elected, this partnership will continue. From one of the volunteers who are often faced with budget constraints, difficult decisions, and bankless tasks, we thank you and wish you all the best. Okay, we'll proceed this evening with each candidate getting two minutes to introduce themselves, and then we have questions that were submitted to us, and then we will go through one at a time, answering the questions. Each candidate will have 10 minutes to answer questions, so if you spend a lot of time on one question, your time will be less on the other questions, but we do have a time keeper, and she will let you know how much time there is. And if we don't get to all the questions, the candidates will have an opportunity to answer the questions, and we'll post those answers for them so the community can read them after the fact. We thank you all for taking your time to be here in person and for people who are watching the broadcast afterwards, that you think this is important, and we hope to do this again in the future. All right, without further ado, we're going to start in valid order. We're going to start with Dr. Ina Von.
Thank you all so much for organizing this event. Really, really appreciate the work that each and every one of you do for our schools, because you're the ones that keep things running, you know? Teachers, staff can do so much, but you're the ones that are able to provide the extra special things that the teachers can't provide for themselves, so thank you. Anyway, what was the question? Oh, why am I doing this? Is that the question? Oh, what a good question. Yeah, so, um, I can't believe I'm doing this again. I'm running now for a second time in two years. I ran initially back in 2024. I made the decision to run, and the reason that I was prompted to do so was that they tried to cut the beginning band and orchestra program, a program that I worked with for 30-some years, a program that I understood the importance of if we were to have a successful and maintain a successful program. And I realized what was being done was they were, and forgive me when I say "they," because now I am "they," and it kind of freaks me out a little bit, but anyway, I wasn't one of them at that time. Anyway, so, can't make this stuff up. So anyway, um, they decided to look at budget line items and go, oh, we can save X amount of money if we cut this budget line item, and they can save this much if we cut this budget line item, which of course doesn't work. And as a teacher, I knew that. And in my time now on the board, I saw it happen again in budget season. We were presented with items, budget line items, no thought as to what it would mean to any program.
Okay, thank you.
Just, this is your two-minute intro, so you don't have to answer your questions unless you want to.
Okay. Hi, everyone.
We're going to ask the questions, and then you'll answer, because the audience doesn't know what your questions are, so just do your intro.
Sounds good. My name's Kim Caneta. As most of you probably know from the other Q&amp;A that we had, I'm an East Brunswick High School graduate as well, alumni, and I have three kids that either went through the system in Churchill, or, you know, and my third one is in the self-contained memorial classroom. So as a parent and a PTA member, I've been with the schools, with the kids at every single party. I've been a groom parent all, you know, for every year that they've been there, every field day, every TGIF event, most of the field trips, orchestra, band concerts, and several sports events, year after year. I am actively on the ground with the children and the teachers to do my, and also do my best to try to advocate for all our children and teachers to have the resources and environment for everyone to thrive. As a community leader, through my role as president of the East Brunswick Arts Coalition and other organizations that I'm a part of, I keep a pulse on community needs. I've met so many community leaders along the way who want so much for East Brunswick. So the quality of learning, the standards we built, the reputation we've gained as an amazing school district is very important to me. And with all of this, I want to work together with the Board of Ed, the new superintendent, with the community, to start new, build healthy relationships, knock down barriers. I will bring fresh ideas, perspectives to the school district, ask questions, set achievable goals, to make sure our schools are performing well so that our children are prepared for the future outside of East Brunswick schools.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maria Antangios, and I'm sorry for this spiel, because you've probably already heard it a few times, but I'm also a proud East Brunswick alumna, class of 2001, and I guess it speaks to East Brunswick that we have so many alumna and, just alumna, yeah, no alumni. I'm the mother of two daughters currently in our schools. For the past nine years, I've served on the PTA board. You know, I went in kindergarten, and I was like, is there an election? Do we get to, do we get to campaign? And they're like, there's no election. If you're doing this, just come on board. So for the past nine years, I've been on a PTA board. For the last four years, I've served as PTA president at Hammer Shield, including one year where I didn't even have a child in the school. It was a gap year, and they said, can you please just do it till your daughter comes up? So, but that's because I genuinely believe in supporting every child's education, not just my own children. Since July, I've also been honored to serve on the Board of Education, filling a vacancy, and I jumped in on day one. Professionally, I hold a doctorate in pharmacy, and I work in the pharmaceutical industry. I run a global operation. I'm the head of that. I bring an analytical and solutions-focused perspective, and I'm also a widowed mother of two girls, so in a single-income household, so I understand the real challenges that families are facing, budgets, rising taxes, and making sure every dollar counts. And I'm running for the Board of Ed because I grew up here, I know the education that I received, and I see areas of improvements, and I want to be a part of that to make sure that East Brunswick returns to its former glory. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Li Wuhan. Thank you, PTA leaders. Thank you very much for supporting school, for raising funds for our teachers, for our students, and thank you very much for your advocacy, just like you are doing now. I have been serving the school for three, uh, three terms, nine years. I'm trying to run again. There's multiple reasons. When I first run, my oldest boy was only two years old. I'm not doing this for myself, it's for the entire community. At this moment, I understand that education is very important. Education can change an individual's life, can change a community's culture, can change a country's future. I personally, I have two master of science degree. One is master of science in polymer chemistry, which is now the popular topic. The second one is master of science in organic chemistry, and the third one, I got a dual doctor degree. My education changed my life, provided means to support my own family and to give back this community. So that is one of the reasons I'm running again. As a board member, my service is recognized by both Middlesex County level and state level. I was certified as master board member by NJASBA this year, and I was certified board member last year. So in East Brunswick history, no board member achieved this level, which means my service is really well. Otherwise, there's, I know nobody there at that level. I was certified, which means, you know, I have the asset to help. That's why I'm going to come back, do it again for next three years. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Mueller, and I'm a proud recent graduate of East Brunswick High School, graduating this past June. I first want to thank the PTA for giving me the opportunity to speak. Personally, as someone who was in the school system for the past 13 years, the PTA was a central part of my school experience. In elementary school, I remember the holiday parties, the international events, and the broad connection between teachers, students, and parents that you guys facilitated. In middle school, I remember the Scholastic Book Fairs, that was one of my favorite memories in Hammer Shield, and in high school, I remember the senior sunrise, senior sunset, and senior awards, and I'm just really grateful for your work. I'm running because I want to give students more of a perspective on the Board of Education. Now, don't get me wrong, I think the board has a great group of individuals. Everyone is an educator, a parent, someone who works in the corporation, all different backgrounds. However, I noticed that there is no student who's currently on the board. And while you could make the argument that there is a student representative, they don't hold voting power, as they're not an actual board member, I'm running to bridge that gap because I think having a student perspective on the board will enhance board decisions to ensure that our students feel safe and supported. Some of my policies that I want to integrate, speaking as a student who recently graduated, is AI. I understand there's been a lot of talk about AI, and I want to ensure that it's implemented at later stages, and I want our students to understand that it's not a substitute for brain development. I also want to advocate more for student mental health to ensure that our students feel safe, and I also want to increase superintendent accountability, because the superintendent should serve to teachers and students, and I want to use my student-centered perspective to offer insight on how the superintendent can better achieve that. Thank you.
All right, now we're going to start with the question part. One thing I forgot to mention in my intro was one whole paragraph, but I'm going to re-roll it. I just want to let everyone know that the questions tonight were, we did not create them, they were submitted by the public, and some of them were combined because there was, you know, some duplicate questions, and some of them were just, we wanted just to make them appropriate for this format. So those questions were, we couldn't take all of them, but each candidate does have four questions, so now we're going to go ahead and just take turns, one at a time, asking questions, and that's where these ladies come in. All right, so, at the end.
You have 10, 12 minutes before we're going to give you another part of the question all you know, time is up.
Anna Bronn, you were unable to participate in discussions about or vote on a superintendent because your daughter works for the district. Can you explain any additional voting restrictions to which you are subject? How do these restrictions impact your ability to be an effective member of the board?
Does this sound like getting your socks in front of the day? It did work today. Okay, well, there you go. All right, now, just so you know, I've already answered this question in a couple of interviews that I've done online, and, but I'm happy to talk about it again because I am extraordinarily proud of being close to the schools, continuing to be close to the schools. In fact, I'm too close to the schools because my daughter is a part-time instructional aide at Churchill. She's working in the school that she went to as a kid, just like I did, and she loves what she's doing. She works with great people. So even though it'd be much more convenient if she would just get another job in another district, hint, hint, my daughter, yeah. Anyway, but yeah, that's the issue, is I'm too close. So I knew that it was possible to be a board member, having a spouse or another relative as an employee, because it's been done multiple times before. In fact, we even had Dr. Magistro's husband worked under her, and so, you know, it's been done. So I knew I was not going to be able to participate in the EBEA contract negotiations. I'm also conflicted because I'm a member of the retired NJEA. My husband is a member of the NJEA, my brother, my sister-in-law, we're all members of the NJEA, so I've got multiple, you know, conflicts in that regard. I was very disappointed to find out that I would not be able to, to, you know, have input on superintendent's evaluation. I found that out when I was handed a letter from the lawyer, from the board lawyer, saying, these are all the things you can and cannot do. And so that was very disappointing. A year ago, when I was running the first time, it never would have occurred to anyone that we would be in the situation of having a new superintendent, because remember, a year ago, the controversy was the superintendent was being offered a five-year contract extension. So, yeah, so that was definitely disappointing. However, I felt very confident with the other eight people on the board that they would make a good decision as far as the new superintendent, and those are really the only restrictions I have. And honestly, I did, I was told once, I saw online, oh, why is Anna running? She can't vote for anything. So, me being me, I went and I counted up. As of the middle of August, I had voted 400 times. So if I have to abstain once in a while for something, it's not like there's nobody else who can pick up the slack and do it. And I think that what I bring to the table is pretty unique, since I know the schools from the inside. I know, I talked too much, sorry. I got it, I got it, I got a timer.
Yeah, I was going to do that, too.
Yeah.
Hi, Kim. Your first question is, you are a working parent and the president of the EB Arts Coalition. How would you balance these demands with a difficult and time-consuming role on the Board of Education?
Thank you. So professionally, I'm the head of regulatory affairs for a financial institution. That basically means I liaise with our fine federal and state regulators to ensure that, you know, we are abiding by the laws and regulations. And so the most important times are when we have an exam, which is on an annual basis. Otherwise, it's just, you know, regular BAU-type of things. So with that being said, you know, my, my work is fairly flexible. It's a German bank, it's a European bank. They, thank goodness, they believe in work-life balance and are extremely flexible with everything, so that's why I'm able to do all these other things for the community in addition to working. And I can't forget, I have a very supportive husband, who said, if I take on this role, I have to not take on anything more. So, you know, in terms of the Arts Coalition, I am the president, but I have a huge board who are very supportive, and really, all I do is bring everybody together, and everybody has their role. We've been doing the same events, you know, in different formats, but pretty much the same standard events per year. Everybody has their role, they can handle everything creatively, financially, and, you know, event planning and all that stuff, and I'm really just the person that brings everybody together to talk. So I do have to say that my board is amazing, and they could probably do the job without me. So yes, I would have to probably pare back a little bit on my other volunteer work, but, you know, I have a great support team.
So all of your time on the board has been brief, and what ways do you feel you've already made an impact? If you are elected to a full three-year term, what lasting contributions do you hope to achieve?
Setting my own timer, too. Sorry, setting my own timer. So if you watched my very first board meeting, I got to work on day one. I actually remember someone said to me, your seat is still cold, and you were already talking, and that day, we were talking about supervisor changes, which I didn't necessarily agree with and didn't vote on because I didn't agree with. And so although my time has been brief, it's only been three months, it's only been four board meetings, one of which was selecting a new superintendent, I feel that I've already been impactful because energy is everything. You know, I don't take no for an answer. I noticed that there was this like atmosphere of, oh, we're always in consensus and consensus, but I think that needed to be redefined. And what I said was, you know, we're going to have conversations, they're going to be difficult conversations, but we're going to have them, and we're going to not necessarily agree, but we have to make sure that what we're doing is in the best interest of our students and our staff. One of the other major impacts was obviously the superintendent selection process, and that was a team effort, but I assure you, I was a vocal through that. There are obviously things we can't speak to that went on, but we, I was extremely vocal in my point of view. Did my mic just go off?
Yeah, it's on.
So, you know, I don't hold back, and one of the things about me is that I know how to advocate, because I've been doing it on the outside. That was actually what encouraged me to do it on the inside as well, because I've already been doing it. So this was just a transition of what was already going on. Now I have to follow a different set of rules, but that's okay, because my advocacy will never change. One of the other major things that I did was I pulled the class size policy. I said, we're not going to have class sizes that don't make sense for our teachers or our students, and you can watch that in the last board meeting, that was a 12-minute exchange back and forth, and finally it was, okay, we're not, we're not voting on this tonight because this needs to be revisited. And I stand by that decision. As far as what I believe I can contribute over the next three years, you know, as I said, curriculum needs to be addressed. We need a new high school. I want to be a part of those decisions because one of the benefits that I bring to the table is I'm able to connect with our community. Having been on the PTA, we have always been advocates, so in order to continue to do that, I need to be there in that seat, making an impact where I can actually vote on things and not just advocating on the outside.
Li Wuhan, you are one of the board's longest-serving members, and recent surveys have suggested public dissatisfaction with some of the board's past decisions. If elected, what would you do differently? How would you support our new superintendent as she seeks to improve the relationship between the board and the public?
Okay, let me start my interview. Thank you for the question. So it's long and big, complex question. There is jokes that the more you serve the public, the more enemies you will have. Okay, so, I'm, yes, I'm one of the longest-serving board members, but in New Jersey's history, the longest-serving board member is 60 years. Last year, as board of director of NJASBA, I signed a certificate for that long 60 years serving board member. I'm not surprised that some people are not happy for the board's decision. My wife and myself sometimes are not happy with the board's decision, but serving as board member, I'm now serving for myself. I'm serving for the entire East Brunswick. When I make a decision, I'm now putting my own children in my heart, it's the entire East Brunswick students. Sometime, my three children benefited, sometime they are not. So, you know, sometime I and my wife are part of the unhappy parents, so I'm not surprised there are some people unhappy. That is the nature. As a board member, even, I, I already, every board member, when you make a decision, please make a decision for the best interest of the entire township, not for somebody else, not for yourself, not for any individual organizations. So if I'm elected, I will do the same, make a decision, cast my vote for the best interest of entire East Brunswick Public School. I have to balance everybody's interests, but as board member, I have to think of the big picture of the town, of the public school. It's not my job to keep certain people happy, but I, it's my job to do my best to make sure the public school is running well and do well, and our children are prepared for the future. As for the new superintendent, well, that is one of the reasons I decided to run for the reelection. East Brunswick got the goat opportunity for the, for the change. We spent so much effort to choose a new superintendent. She will be here, start her job in December. As board member, if I'm not elected, I will still do my best for, in December, to help her to first get to know the East Brunswick, the East Brunswick Public School, help her to figure out what's the best East Brunswick has, what is going on in East Brunswick, is happening now in this town, and what can, so help her to understand the current curricular situation, financial situation, current employees, teachers, facilities. I will try my best to help her get to know this town, and at the same time, and I will help her, do my best to help her to make a plan, actionable plan, for three months, one year, three years, and then I will try my best with support other fellow board members, post those target plan on website, so we can, everyone in this town can hold her accountable. So, just, so I understand some people complain that current superintendent has problems in the relationship between school and the town. I'm sure our new superintendent will act differently. As board member, I will provide my support for everything she needs, and my personal ability, and as board member, I actually, I don't have too much power, but I will try my best to help. Thank you.
As the youngest candidate, do you feel prepared for this difficult and time-consuming role? What are the positives of having a youth voice on the board?
Thank you for the question. I want to say that, yes, I feel very prepared for the role as a Board of Education member, and this is because East Brunswick prepared me well. Our high school was outstanding, and as a student in the high school, I took eight AP classes, and I learned how to manage time, my time. I also learned how to collaborate with others, which are skills that I think are important for the Board of Ed. Additionally, I think that my youth voice is an asset into Additionally, I think that my youth voice is an asset in two ways. First off, because I'm younger, I obviously have friends within the high school and lower grade levels and because of my age, I'm the only candidate who can say that, with all due respect to other candidates. And my, sorry, sorry, no offense, no offense. But because of that age, because of my age being closer to the students in the school system, I'm more accessible. A lot of them have my phone number and so I'm open to them messaging me to voice their concerns. Additionally, me having a youth, more of a youth voice means that I think about issues very differently. I'll give an example. For example, there is a current issue of technology and the phones in the high school. Now personally, as someone who went to the high school, I think that the policy should be centered less around banning cellphones, but addressing the root of the issue, which is self-control. Instead of banning phones, which doesn't do much to actually change the behavior of being on your phone, I think the board and superintendent should focus more on reinforcement policies that are designed to promote not using your cellphone. Additionally, I want to make it a point that being young is not a liability. In fact, so much has been accomplished by young individuals. Let's look at East Brunswick's very own star, Ms. Vinyah Chabra. At only 14 years old, she stunned the judges on The Voice with, with Judge Riva praising her and, and because, even though she's very young, that didn't stop her from having a powerful voice and from impressing the judges. Could you imagine what would happen if someone told her not to audition just because she's too young? Now, the point is, while I might be young, I care about our district and I have the ability. If elected, I'm going to increase accountability on the superintendent through asking more difficult questions. I'm going to listen more to residents' concerns because they deserve to have more input on what goes on behind the scenes. And I'm also going to use my student-centered perspective to bring new ideas to the table. We owe it to our students to serve them.
Anna, at the time of your election, the public expressed concerns about budget, anti-bias education, bullying, and communication. How have you helped the board make progress on these issues?
So from the youngest perspective to the oldest perspective, I just have to, I just have to say how happy I am to be sitting up here with the four of us being EBHS alumna. So way to go, ladies. Sorry, Leewaam, but, you know. So, budget, good heavens. Walking into budget season was like seeing a dumpster fire and being given a teacup to try to put the dumpster fire out. One of the things that frustrates me the most about the way the, the budget process worked was that on March the 3rd, we were handed a 77 items document that we didn't see ahead of time, that we didn't get to even proofread or anything before we sat down and had to start making decisions and come to consensus on what to cut. I'm sorry, that's ridiculous. That's going to change for this upcoming budget season because we can't allow that to happen again. Communication, communication has been a big thing. I felt that there's not enough communication between the administration and the township. Why should, and even as a board member, why am I finding out about things on Facebook? That's not cool at all. Why aren't emails being answered? I don't know. I send, I send emails that don't get answered. This is unacceptable. Fortunately, we have a new superintendent coming in and we can set those kind of goals. I mean, it's, it's not a very high bar. It's not a high bar to jump, to say, "Answer emails." Okay? So if anything, those are things that I feel I have contributed to.
Hi, Kim. Your second question? You previously mentioned that you are a special needs parent. Are there any problems with the district's current policies regarding special needs children and what do you think the district is doing well?
So I love the fact that we pride ourselves on our love and support for special needs. I think our, my CPAG parent friends are amazing in what they do in coming together to form a group that provides support and resources and a network to help navigate the system. Once a child has their IEP or their, you know, learning program, I think we do well in following up on their progress and providing the resources that the child needs to continue their progress. I think that's, you know, I personally had great experience with that for both my kids. But I think one of the things that we could do better is helping those who are starting out in the district to navigate and get advocates for their children. I think that's a, a big, a big part that we need to do better with. You know, a lot of, a couple of parents have come to me asking, you know, "I think my child needs help, you know, what, what can I do?" And, you know, I would, I would tell her to contact the department and, you know, there's not, not really a way for them to navigate on their own, hence the CPAG group, you know, really helps with that. So I think what the district could do better is to be more supportive in that role. One of, one particular instance that came up was a parent, you know, their, their child had difficulties getting to school because she had sensory issues with her clothes. And, you know, she tried to address it with the department, she tried to address it with the teachers, and the only question that came up was, "Is it disrupting her learning process?" Well, if she can't get to school, how is she going to learn? Right? So, you know, they didn't do anything about it. They said they'll just monitor it in school, but that wasn't the issue. So where do we start the process? Does it have to be reflected in school where the teachers have to be there to say, "Okay, this child needs help?" Or do we need to listen to our parents a little bit more and, you know, help from a parent perspective? So I think communications, open communication, better communication with parents that are trying to seek help for their children needs to come out a little bit more. Something else, I guess, I also feel we need some more transparency in terms of what resources are available for all our kids. You know, when I go into those IEP meetings, I'm told, you know, occupational therapy, speech therapy, all this stuff. But for those who don't ask the right questions, they're not going to get answers. So I think we need to be a little bit more transparent in terms of laying out all the resources that could possibly help, what we have to offer and, you know, just to make it a little bit easier for the parents to understand the whole process because it is a lot to, to handle. And that's what I have to say about that. Thanks.
Hi, Maryann. You highlighted your corporate experience as a strength during your interview to fill the board vacancy. Can you explain how your professional background prepared you to help conduct a superintendent search in your first few days on the board? What is your opinion of how that search was conducted and how the board is governed more generally?
So as far as my experience, I know what a leader looks like. A leader knows how to connect with the room, not just command it. A leader knows how to have a conversation. A leader has emotional intelligence and when someone is going on a rant, they are hearing what their, what their need actually is. So in doing the superintendent search, those are the things that I was looking for in everyone that we spoke to. I wanted someone who could connect with us because if they can connect with the board who are representing all of you, they can represent, they can connect with all of you. I, I, it wasn't just my experience, it was also being a part of those focus groups for the superintendent searches. I was like, "What is our community value?" I had my notes out from those focus groups and I said, "What is our community looking for?" And the superintendent that we found hit the nail on the head with all of those with regards to the, the part about how the search was conducted. So I wasn't a part of the search from the very beginning. I, I did go through all of the interviews, but I wasn't a part of the criteria that was put in place in selecting the agency. Would I have done things differently? Perhaps. But what that, what matters most is that ultimately the end goal was the same. We have an excellent superintendent, I stand by that. She has everything that this district was looking for. Was that process expedited? Yes, but it was also concise. And I, I, you know, you have my word on that. I would not have stood for it otherwise. And then as far as how the board is governed more generally, what I will say is that, is that the board, the board is made up of nine individuals and those nine individuals are all equal members and that board leadership should be, you know, it's defined as the first among equals. And that's, I don't know if everyone's familiar with that term means, but it just means that this is just one person who's in charge of certain aspects, but the board, they, they will know more authority than the rest of the board. So I, as far as the governing goes, the board should be governing itself. That, that term governing is not, is not defined to one individual. And that's, I hope that answered the question as best as I could.
Leewaam, as head of the Curriculum Committee, how do you feel about the school piloting a new English language arts curriculum? Should your committee and the board as a whole be doing more to respond to public concerns about the ELE curriculum and early literacy?
Thank you. Yes, I'm the chairperson for the Curriculum Committee. So first, I want to introduce how the curriculum, any committee is, consists of, multiple administrators, two, three board members, and a few parents. The chair is, holds the meeting and takes the committee's decision, recommendation to the entire board, but it's up to the entire board to take the committee's decision. When I come, when I came to this coun, I'm a, yes, a learner. When I come to this country, I was 28 years old. I never speak English. I never heard anyone talk to me in English. I know how important language is. Language, English is a tool for everyone to learn science, to learn math, to learn any technology. So I understand how important the language is. As the committee chair and as one of the board member, I strongly support the pilot program. I order the board to provide any, any needed resource to help any individual student. For this regard, we cannot let anybody fall behind. If we need one-on-one, let's do it. If we need a special mentor or special tutor, let's do it because language is so important. It's the fundamental tool for anybody to achieve. If, if we want our student to perform well in math, in science, in history, anything, even in art, language is a must. So I support every effort to help our student improve learning their languages.
Maria, can you explain some of the challenges parents with special needs children have experienced in our schools? How do you feel about the process to apply for IEP 504 plans?
Thank you for the question. To answer the first part, I think some of the challenges that parents who have students who face special needs, they, they have to deal with the issues. For example, too much emphasis on standardized test scores, which we know don't account for everything. Additionally, I think that a lot of parents have to often deal with stigma surrounding their children and that's something that needs to be addressed. Regarding the first part about test scores, I think that while they can be a good metric of evaluating student growth, they don't tell the whole story. Students are more than just numbers on a piece of paper. And when, actually, I spoke with a resident in East Brunswick not too long ago, who's a special education teacher in another town, she emphasized the fact that instead of focusing on the traditional, you know, standardized test scores, teaching to the test, that there should be more effort done to integrate students with special needs more into the community in order to de-stigmatize them. Personally, I would support initiatives such as workshops for job training to ensure that our students have a path to success after leaving East Brunswick schools. Additionally, I want them to have more social interactions so that the community is aware that people have different needs and abilities and that should be respected. And on that note, I actually want to give a shout out to Councilwoman Winston in the back, who, for her sensory art classes. I think it's a fantastic thing, thing for her to give recognition to suit people with different abilities and to help them with art since that's a really cool way to self-express your identity. I think she sets a fantastic example and I would love to see more of that integrated within the East Brunswick school system. So cheers to you, Councilwoman Winston. Thank you. Now for the second part about the process to apply for the IEP and 504 plans, I can't personally give comments here in that because I'm not a parent, hopefully not for a long time, no offense. And however, just from doing research, I have the impression that you do submit a written request to the Special Education Department, you do have a meeting with the parent, the parents do have a meeting with the staff, and there are evaluations to determine what, what help, if any, a student gets. Personally, while I can't comment too much about that because I haven't personally experienced it myself, I do think parents deserve more input on their students. They, they should be able to give routine survey feedback to ensure that teachers are complying with the proper educational needs that their child requires. I also would like to see more superintendent accountability in this regard because I want students with special educational needs to understand that they deserve the same opportunities as every other student.
You often talk about the importance of great teachers. In your opinion, what is the role of parents and the larger community in making a school successful? How should the board interface with parents and the town as a whole?
Just what we're doing tonight is so wonderful. I wish that we could just take your questions or that we could just talk back and forth. This is what I would like to see done at each school, have open forums where parents can come, express their concerns to us and have more than three minutes to answer. I would also like to see that changed at board meetings, that community members be given more than three minutes. Because if you want to keep us there until midnight, that's what we signed up for. Go right ahead. I don't have a problem with it. I would also like to see things like the results of the parent and student surveys that were done in May. Now, Maryann, have you seen those results? I think we remember asking for those. Yeah, we haven't seen those. How do we know what problems are if we're not told what the problems are? So you can see, this is like a kind of a systemic thing that I have found during my time on the board. And obviously, it's important that we interface with the town with all this new construction going in. I hope that we can build a better relationship with the mayor and people who are making decisions that are out of our control.
The Board of Education recently proposed closing Bound Run Row, but some residents are concerned with school capacity in East Brunswick as East Brunswick grows. What is your opinion on capacity issues, larger class sizes, and redistricting schools based on population shifts? How would you address these issues?
So we've definitely seen some changes in East Brunswick.
So we've definitely seen some changes in East Brunswick. You have the redevelopment, you have all the apartments and condos coming up, but you also have the houses, the existing houses where, you know, people are selling new, families are moving in because of our great school district. So, you know, it's apparent that there's disproportion in our elementary schools. I see it in Memorial where, you know, for my child's fourth grade class, there's like 24 kids in it. I am a believer of redistricting. I think it needs to be done. It has to at least get evaluated. You know, we need an evaluation to see, you know, how best to deal with shifting some of the kids over because we haven't done it in such a long time. And there's been a lot of change. And it's, like I've said in previous interviews, it's a lot of pressure on the teachers to be teaching such large classes. And everything snowballs from there, right? If we want standardized tests to be better, if we want our programs to be better, smaller classes, I think is better than the larger ones. So I am a big believer of, you know, at least doing an evaluation to see if redistricting would help and how that would look. And I think I answered how I would address this issue, yeah.
Mary Ann, do you support using the board's tax levying power to increase taxes as a way to balance the budget? If not, how would you address next year's likely budget shortfall?
So, you know, it's funny because my boss will always tell me every time I hear the word "power," I kind of take a deep breath. Because with great power comes great responsibility. I don't think it's okay for us to just say, "We have a problem. Let's just raise everyone's taxes." You know, part of my job and working in corporate is we have budget issues also. I manage a multimillion dollar budget. And when there's a cut, there's no such thing as an increase. I can't just request that there's money coming in from somewhere else. So what I have to look for are efficiencies and not increases. So what does that mean for us? That would mean that we would need to review contracts, review our energies, review our transportation and our operations. And I've been doing some of that. And then look at shared services with neighboring towns and districts and reallocating our funds to what matters most, which is our students. I actually have here like things that I had for the other Meet the Candidates event. But, you know, one of the things I can't speak to as a board member, but it would be a 10 to 15% savings. This is just my own math. And then looking at something like, you know, we have reimbursement claims. It's like paperwork that's been filed incorrectly. It's money that's owed to us. We budgeted about $2 million for that. And if we correctly netted that and looked at how it could be better fixed, it's just like sloppy paperwork. That's about $210,000 to $244,000 that could come back to us. And then paying less to run our buildings, not cutting programs. So that would save us another $400,000 to $600,000 annually. And I can get into the details of that, but it's things like new LEDs, smart thermostats, efficient systems. There's one school in Arkansas that put solar panels on their buildings, and they saved $8 million that way. So, I mean, there's things that we can look into. And I've suggested these things as a parent before I was even a board member, and the answer is always, "Well, we can't. We can't." But I want to know why. And anyone can tell you. I never take no for an answer. So it's a constant, "Why not?" I want to know why not. If you're going to tell me no, I need a good reason. So no, until, if there's money on the table, I'm not okay to raise anyone's taxes. That should always be a last resort after we've exhausted every other avenue. And again, I say that wholeheartedly because, like I said, I'm a single income household, and every dollar matters for me and my family, and I know it does for everyone else, too. So I'm not comfortable with having power to say, "We can raise taxes," and just doing it because that's a great responsibility, and I'm not going to put that on the taxpayers or anybody in this town.
You are currently the board's vice president. How have you used your leadership position to find and advocate for creative solutions to the budget crisis?
Yes, I'm currently the vice president for this school board. And at the same time, I'm the executive board member for Middle States County School Board Association, and I'm the board of director of NJASBA, representing Middle States County. So I don't think we're already cutting enough for the budget. My approach is, I'm going to, I have been for the last two years. Every time when I have a meeting in Trenton, I talk to people, try to change the formula. I believe that is the right way to solve our problem. Of course, other issues, other approach, just like Dr. Titani said, is good. But to solve the real problem, the state should give us enough money. For example, one thing that I lobby is changing the funding formula. Another thing I lobby is special need reinforcement. At this moment, state does not give us enough money we deserve. At the same time, when we send a student out of district surface, the board, no board in the state of New Jersey has any bargaining power. They just send you the bill, you have to pay. So that's the real problem. So I use my position to lobby the change from the up. So the cameraman for NJASBA is actually East Brunswick resident. He know how badly each time I lobby, I argue, I talk to people, try to get more money, to bring the money to this town. At the same time, I believe every community member should contribute, should do your best. I personally, I don't know who is the Memorial School PTA president. The multimedia room, the robots, I donated. So the third grader and fourth grader are still using it. Every year I donate to EBEF, and I submit proposal twice already to donate a greenhouse. Every community member should try your best to do whatever, to chip in whatever you can. At the same time, I really, I'm a big fan of EBEF. So they are doing a very good job to tap the successful, very successful alumni. For example, Michael Sable, he's donating half a million dollars. That is a very good way, the extra addition to our resource. So we have multiple ways, but I don't support the idea of cutting our staff, cutting our program. They are the fundamental asset we have. That's the magnet attracting new people moving to this town. That's the cornerstone of this town. East Brunswick does not have anything other than this school. We need to try our best. Everybody got to do everything you can to keep the school going. So I'm sorry, I just have too much to share. I already use up my time. So anyone, if you want to talk, I'm available. You can come to my office. I'm a private business owner. So, and if I'm trial case in the court, I'm open to talk. So anything, but at the same time, I'm on position number five. I'm willing. I'm the best piece for the school board. Please voting for me. It's no joke.
Just a couple more questions.
I can submit an answer in writing.
Maria, as a recent high school graduate, what are your thoughts on a new high school? Is it necessary for the future of the district, and how would you propose to fund it?
So one of the things I love about having a student-centered perspective is that when I was a junior at East Brunswick High School, our pipe burst, which sent us into two weeks for virtual learning. Now, when the pipe got repaired, I can tell you, the only people who were more happy about me going back to school were my parents because I wasn't in the house anymore. And given that experience and given the fact that I personally experienced a lot of overcrowding, I do think the sustainable solution in the future is to have a new high school, even if it might be difficult to fund it. Simply put, I'm worried that because of the building being very old, it might not be in compliance with a lot of building codes, which could make it difficult for our staff and our students. Now, in terms of funding, given that I'm a member of the public and I'm not too aware of different avenues, I would say that from my knowledge, I would rely on municipal bonds as well as categorical grants from the states because that's what I'm familiar with. However, I recognize that perhaps if you're on the board, you might have knowledge of other funding mechanisms. And so if elected, I am open to hearing other perspectives on that. Furthermore, I want to emphasize that there are ways we can creatively resolve our budget issue. I know this does tie in the fourth question, but I anticipate running out of time, so I'm just going to address this. In terms of raising more revenue, I have to say that I was kind of shocked when I heard that clubs and activities are now $30 per club. As a matter of fact, from my student-centered perspective, my first instinct wasn't to increase club activities. It's actually to increase the parking permits at East Brunswick High School. Now, I was a senior at East Brunswick High School. I drove my car. And what I can tell you is that the students who can afford to drive cars to East Brunswick High School are the same students who can afford a $10 to $20 increase in a permit. The issue with increasing the prices on the clubs is that it disproportionately impacts students who come from families with lower incomes. That's not cool. That's not fair. And I think if we're going to start trying to make more revenue, we should be targeting people who can afford to pay. East Brunswick is a town where it embraces people of different backgrounds, and I think it's important that we consider equity as one of the main priorities in our school system.
You actually do have time.
Okay.
Does Anna have any time?
I think we all can wait. Maybe like 30 seconds.
Anna, the music program is very close to your heart. It's apparent that you will always try to save it from being cut during budget negotiations. How would you propose to address budget shortfalls without cutting our music and arts program?
Well, it's our motto here at East Brunswick. Excellence in academics, athletics, and arts, but not really art so much anymore. Because we already lost time from our elementary kids. 25% of their time in music and art was cut. There's a reason that we have arts programming in our schools. We've had excellent arts programming in our schools for years and years, and I watched it grow, starting in when I was a kid, going through the school system. This is a subject that is really important to a lot of kids. This is where kids need to find their passion. They need to find the thing. Some kids, it's sports. Other kids, it's, you know, math or science or whatever their passion is. But for a lot of kids, including myself and my children, it was music. And it breaks my heart that we are even looking at cutting some of the most popular programs that we have in our schools. There are 1,500 kids involved in a music performance class in grades four through nine. I don't think there's any other program that comes close to that kind of participation. We need to bring in, not only do we need to bring in more money, but we need to make sure that we are prioritizing the educational programming for our students and trim every last penny of non-essential expenditures. We can't keep borrowing from the municipality because we borrow money, but then we have to pay it back with interest. I don't care if it's debt level from year to year. We're buying things, for example, on this last bond that we bought, we were buying musical instruments. Now, I asked, which I thought was a good question, "Why are we buying musical instruments? You're going to cut half of the band and orchestra staff. You're not going to need those instruments." I was told, "Oh, it's not that much." Yeah, you know what? That all adds up. We spent $20,000 for a lady to bring her fluffy border collie to each of the schools, and then the border collie runs around and chases away all the geese. Give me a megaphone, I'll make sure there are no more geese, and you don't have to pay me $20,000 either. The absurdity of some of the things we are spending our money on, and this is just the tip of the iceberg. We need to rent 760 Route 18. Why didn't we need an administration building? We keep cutting administrators.
I'm so sorry.
Oh, darn. Okay. Sorry.
At the recent school board meeting, Dr. Bolley discussed test scores and the progress of different student cohorts. Do you think East Brunswick is doing enough to serve the needs of all the students, including low-income students? What additional questions would you have asked if you were on board?
So I'm a believer that, I'm a believer in standardized testing. I think test scores are important in measuring how a child in a district is doing compared to their peers in other townships and areas. I know, you know, there's more to it than just test scores, but it's a measurement, right? From personal experience, I know we do have, you know, my son had ILA support, ILA support class. Because although he was getting straight A's, his reading level was not where it needed to be, so they took away an elective to put him in an ILA support class. There's also opportunities where the teachers are able to, you know, offer after-school support or before-school support for anybody that they see struggling. But I do think that there needs to be more of a pulse check for students just to see how everybody is doing. I think it was said in the last Q and A's that we need more flexibility, or the teachers need more flexibility with their learning plans. If a concept is not being understood by some of your students, you should be able to slow down a little bit. Because I notice with some of my kids, you know, it's like, it's very structured. It's very like, first day you learn it, second day, you know, second day, you do some practice, third day is a quiz. You know, and it just keeps on moving on that way. But if they don't grasp the initial concept, it just keeps going. So I would like to have teachers to have that flexibility to, you know, focus a little bit more on certain topics, I think. And I think that would definitely help. Some of the questions, or an additional question I would have asked at the board, at the board meeting, you know, one thing that I tell my team when they show data, when they present data, if there's glaring gaps in the data or something that looks, that brings up red flags, you should really do your investigation, see what's happening, you know, own it, and come up with possible solutions. So, you know, one of the things that I would probably questioned was whether or not there's a plan. You know, is there something we're doing to better the scores? You know, what are some options that we have going on? You know, and provide some sort of suggestions or options rather than, you know, somebody asking and then having to come back to address it in like the next meeting, or maybe not at all. So I think that would be, you know, my question when the data was presented.
Mary Ann, based on your experience on the board thus far, what do you see as the biggest challenges facing East Brunswick Public Schools in the next three years?
Two minutes. Okay. So I won't say budget and a new high school because I'm sure the community has heard those over and over again. I won't get into those. But really, what I see as the biggest challenge is we need to rebuild this board. We need a board that, we are an employer, and we have to view ourselves that way. We have one employee, it's the superintendent. We need to make sure that she's set up for success. Because when we don't do that, when we don't hold accountability, what ends up happening is that we have, we create an environment of, you know, we're just letting things go by, and then the minute we ask a question, it's perceived as, you know, an attack or it's personal. So we need to make sure that we're setting our superintendent up for success so that when we ask a question, it's a matter of accountability. And I say this because it is a challenge when you've come from a culture that's been doing this a certain way for a certain number of years, and now we have to flip a page and start a new chapter nice and clean. So this is going to be a learning curve. Like I said earlier, difficult conversations to have, they're going to have to be had. There's no way around that. The other thing is our teacher morale. That, you know, we got it to the point that it's at, and that didn't happen overnight. it's at, and that didn't happen overnight, and in order to fix it, that's also going to take time. There's going to have to be changes in how we've been doing things, and that's going to have to start from the top. Leadership is everything. Leadership drives this entire organization, and that's going to have to be reflective here, too. Our teachers cannot succeed if we are not giving them the tools to do so, and our children will not thrive if they're in an environment where their leaders are not able to help them. So this starts from the top. Superintendent, teachers, our kids. No one is more important than anyone else in this, but without those three working synergistically, this isn't going to happen. And that's something that we're really going to have to focus on, in addition to the budget and the high school, but those are the things that you guys already know, so I don't want to beat a dead horse.
Maria, some districts were forced to raise taxes up to twenty-five percent to save major programs and teachers' jobs. If necessary, would you vote to raise the taxes? What other solutions might you propose to solve a budget crisis?
How much time do I have left?
Apologies.
Sorry, no, sorry, I just wanted to check.
You have two minutes and twenty-two seconds.
All right, thank you. That's a really cool number, by the way. Okay. Regarding the first part of the question, in terms of raising property taxes, I know this is a very typical and going to be a very unpopular answer, but unfortunately, I would have to say yes. However, increasing property taxes would be a last resort. I recognize that property taxes place a lot of burdens on homeowners. As a matter of fact, property taxes are inherently regressive, meaning it puts a larger burden on lower-income earners, which I don't think is right. And now, this is why I want to focus on other avenues to, to address the budget issue. I already touched upon increasing parking lot permits, but I think we can use other mechanisms. For example, I want to see that we strengthen our alumni network. Now, in my senior year, I was a member of the We the People team, and because of how excellent the program was, we had alumni who were willing to donate to help us go to DC. We had alumni who were willing to provide mentorship. If elected, I want to advocate for the creation of alumni committee that integrates more of our alumni to facilitate donations. This can be done in the form of creating an opt-in mailing list where alumni can get updates about the school and then be encouraged to donate whatever sum of money possible. I also want to think of more creative solutions. For example, advertising in the football stadium. We have a lot of great local businesses, and if we let them advertise in our football stadium, this can drive them more recognition and also open pathways for our students to seek maybe jobs or internships with them, thus creating a positive feedback loop. Additionally, I do think it's also important that we have more conversations with people in our community. It was actually through speaking with members of the community that I learned about a special plastic technology in PSCNG, where they can actually use plastic lining to fix pipe issues without actually having to dig up the pipe itself. And it's conversations like those where we can also navigate decreasing costs as we navigate this budget issue. And point is, I want to emphasize more collaboration with the community, because everyone has different ideas that bring so much to the table. Thank you.
All right, we're going to make a switch now from the three-year candidates to the one-year candidates. Thank you all from the media.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Antonia Vola. I'm running for the one-year term. Shout out to my PTA people. You guys did a very good job. I can only imagine the questions that they got sent to them, so based on what I got, it's looking interesting. I've been living in East Brunswick for the last ten years. My husband Anthony's right here. We have two children. My son is in Churchill, ninth grade, and my daughter is in sixth grade, Hammershold. I'm currently the PTA president for Hammershold. I was the vice president last year at Hammershold, and I am a solution seeker, which is why I'm decided to run for the Board of Ed. For the last two years, we've been experiencing serious budget issues in East Brunswick, which is probably why this is a really, really popular election, and everybody's interested in what's going on, which is a great problem to have. The first year, I decided that as a solution seeker, instead of complaining and, and being okay with what they were doing, I wanted to see what I could do. So myself and two other moms created an action alert. We put together the legislative committees for the budget and the education committees for senators and assembly, because we were told by the district to go out there and talk to legislators, but regular, normal people don't know what that means. They don't know how to find them, they didn't know what to say. So we pretty much came up with a blurb of, you know, a copy and paste if you wanted to, but a lot of people did take the opportunity to edit it, to personalize it. We were able to get five hundred thousand in restored funding that year, so I felt like that was successful. And then I had asked Dr. Waleski in a forum what his plans were for the following year, because I already knew it was coming. Everybody in the state knew it was coming. The funding formula was improperly being implemented, and they were going to enforce it the right way. Then we got met with the budget introduction in February, where, you know, they dangle the carrot, we're closing bounds, we're going to turn Hammershold into a school. Am I good? Okay. Anyway, long story short, I need to be in front of the budget. I can't tell you what I can do from the outside anymore. I'm tired of having to advocate from the outside. I don't want seven hundred people to show up at the next board meeting when they find out that they're closing schools, cutting programs. So that's why I decided to run for the one-year. It's a good opportunity for me to be able to see if I can be effective on the inside, and if I do find that I'm effective, I will run for the three-year term next year. But if I find that I'm ineffective, I'm more than happy to come on the outside and advocate from the outside. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, PTA, for putting this together. I love the format. So my name is Jeff Winston, and I'm running for the one-year. Some may know me that I was on the board before. I understand I'm going to be asked about that, so I'll save the, I'll save the response for a little bit. But with that, here's where we're at with the, with the district. My background is strong, it's in finance, and that question's coming up too, so I'll wait for that as well. So thank you for not making me use my two minutes on that part. But we are at a point right now, and I can't stress this enough, I'm, based on what I've looked at, looking at trajectory, looking at staff morale, looking at personnel, I'm roughly a twenty-four-month doomsday clock. But twenty-four months from now, our district will begin the collapsing mode. When it begins that, folks like realtors will start to have to remove the blue-ribbon district or excellent school district. Your property values are going to be impacted, and taxation will be the only solution. This is what we need to avoid. What I bring to the board right now, not only historical knowledge, but the finance background, that's extremely strong. But more importantly, we have to look at the board now, the difference between what we do and who we are. Okay? What we do, finance, you know, Antonia's background, every other board member, Dr. Hong mentioned, lawyer, scientist, all those things is what you do, but who are you? What we're missing right now is a sense of values in this district. Our values have declined enormously. A lot of it's due to some of the things that Ms. Mueller had mentioned when it comes to leadership, which is true, because leadership defines the culture. And if we don't have a culture that, that is a goal set to change the trajectory, the twenty-four-month clock will continue to tick away. We need results immediately. My historical knowledge will bring that. What we don't have time for, I want to speak to others and find out what's happening. I've created a twenty-point platform. It's designed from being inside the district for five and a half years that I did serve. Taking those twenty points is important. We don't run the district. Our job is to work with our sole employee and to issue what we believe to be the right things. Expect results back. We need a measurable system that is, that is specific, that is published, that is visible on the district website. Where are we with the priorities? And how are we going to move forward? We don't have time to learn. Learning time is over. We are where we are, and change is needed time. I knew it. I knew it was counting in my head. Good job. Thanks.
Antonia, why did you choose to run for the one-year position? And if you are elected, which of your goals would you prioritize during this limited time?
Thank you. That's a good question. Whoever asked that, shout out to you. That was nice, because that's an important question. There were two options. You can do the one-year term or the three-year term. I felt that I can do, I had a unique opportunity to be able to just do one year and see if I could be effective on the inside. Like I said, I've been effective on the outside, and I want to be able to be inside, so I don't have to wonder what are the things on the budget that we can cut, what are the things that we value. We were only privy to certain line items during the budget crisis, and I don't know if there are other things that they could have added to those and removed those positions. In that one year, I also have an opportunity to be in front of the new superintendent, to let her know what we value in this district, what we're not okay with losing. We're not going to have any, we're not going to have any ability to advocate for, with the new superintendent on the outside the way we did before. Dr. Waleski was here for a long time. He knew what to dangle in front of us to make us be okay with the tax increases. She needs to know right from the start that we value the classroom, the teachers, the sports, the music, and all the other things that make this district important and excellent. So if I cannot be effective in that one year, then I have the opportunity to step back and try and do it from the outside again, which is why I chose the one-year. I didn't want to commit myself to three years and then regret having made that decision. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff. Your first question, you often emphasize your financial background as an asset to the board, yet you chose to step down from the board immediately prior to a difficult budget. Can you explain this decision?
I can explain it. And first, I want to acknowledge Ms. Vola's reason why. I'm happy to hear it evolved from a year ago. She wrote, my goal is to run next year to personally remove Jeff Winston from his seat. So I'm happy that you've actually found a different reason. So with that said, why did I leave the board? To make it simple. If I told any of you PTA moms, you know what? I don't care what your opinion is. Dr. James, I don't care what your opinion is. Why don't you be quiet? Nobody wants to hear from you. I bet you I wouldn't feel too good. What I and Mr. Sizmar, who resigned from the board, was what we were subject to on almost a daily basis within the meetings. I'll give you some quotes. "We don't care about Robert's rules. Your opinion doesn't matter. Be quiet. We've already decided what this vote's going to look like. You didn't ask us. We don't care what you have to say." There's many other quotes, but I don't want to waste my time on that. I left because I was ineffective. Did I quit? Nah, I didn't quit. If I quit, all of this wouldn't be happening right now. You talk about the budget year, difficult budget year, and I'm glad you brought that up. The year that I quit and the budget was presented, there were two people in the audience, Mr. Sizmar and me. The rest of the people that were there were all staff members. There was no awareness. What I wanted to do was to create awareness, so I embarked on that, and that's what was important. I formed a group, it was called Take Back EB Schools. We fast grew to over twelve hundred members within the first three months. Now we're at seventeen hundred, eighteen hundred, somewhere in there, called East Brunswick Action. It was all about raising awareness. When I was on the board, if we had two people come to the podium at any time, that was a good day. Now, it's pretty hard to fight it out. I think Mr. Levin and I kind of jockeyed for position at the last meeting. People are trying to get to the mic. That's what we needed. All of that awareness has now prompted all of this type of questioning. New forums have developed, harder questions. That's what happened when I quit. There are signs around town, Jay quitted, all of that. How silly. How silly is that? What a waste of money. Yet everybody sitting in this room, you wouldn't have been here. I do take credit for the awareness in this town. I am thrilled. I've lived here for almost sixty years in this town, and this is the first time that I've seen the district energized to the way it is. New members like Dr. Tanyo's coming on to the board, new ideas. Why did I quit? I didn't quit. If I didn't quit, you wouldn't know me. Since I started this, not one incumbent has won. The superintendent has resigned, and the group that I worked with and the awareness I raised, I take full credit for that, and I'm thrilled that we're moving in a direction of resolution. Thank you.
Your campaign message states that you do not support raising taxes to address budget shortfalls. If faced with tough choices, where would you be willing to make cuts to avoid tax increases and why?
Another great question. Again, I don't have full access to the budget until I'm on the board. I know for certain that we have an amazing finance team that gets paid a lot of money. We have really, really top-heavy administration. If you compare us to other districts, that is where a lot of our salary increases are going, to the top-heavy administration that we have. What we should be focusing on is not raising taxes as a solution. If you look at Old Bridge, Hillsborough, Neptune, all these places had to do double-digit tax increases because they weren't prepared. I don't want to have a board in front of the superintendent and the business administrator next year that they are okay with knowing tax increases is the solution. They need to know that they have to work harder before they present us with a budget that looks like what it looked like last time. We cannot be, we cannot be putting the tax burdens on the taxpayers, because if you really look at this, if you really look at East Brunswick, not everybody can afford a ten, fifteen, twenty-five percent tax increase. I wish it was like that. I wish we could say, oh, no big deal, just raise it twenty-five percent, because it's going to be a tough decision. That is not a decision that should be made. The decision should be made to do it effectively. You have to look at where we're creating revenue. Everyone's always looking to cut, 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 but what are we going to do to create revenue in this town? Why is the finance department not doing any of those things? So that's why I need to be in the Board of Education, because I need to be able to see that budget, to see what can be cut, so that tax increases is not the solution. Once you take something away from somebody, you will very rarely get it back. Once you let that administration know that you guys are okay with raising taxes, it'll go from three to five to seven to ten, and next thing you know, you're going to be looking for a home, because you won't be able to afford to live here anymore. Thank you.
In your opinion, what should be the district's goals with regards to special education? Can the board play a role in ensuring that the schools create and implement IEPs that reflect the needs of students, even if this requires additional spending?
Okay, this is probably the number one issue this district is going to face. Roughly twenty-one percent of the population right now in our district has some form of special needs. I've been involved in special needs with my family, and I can remember that I felt like it was a bargaining day when I would go into an IEP meeting, trying to figure out what's going on, when I just couldn't help but hearing a whisper in my head, we're making this decision based on budget, not about your child. And that gets a little unnerving. We send an enormous amount of kids out of district. I just had the pleasure, the absolute pleasure today, to meet a young lady who came to our home for one of my, my wife's art classes, and I listened to the frustrations of her at fourteen years old, and she's being sent away. She's being sent away because we just don't have the ability to handle all learning styles within our district, and we constantly rip them away as if it's somebody else's problem. That's where I'd start. I have a list of things what's wrong with the current way that we handle special needs at this point. The list, I started jotting notes, and quite frankly, it made me sad. We have to increase our special needs community, our increase is exponential. We need to find money to fund these things. We have to stop being so stubborn as we look at things that have to change. Right out of the gate, get rid of seventh grade, the seventh grade sports that we have recreation in town. Take that money, reallocate it to the growing population. We can barely feel these teams, but our doors are just exploding with special need, our special, most special members of our community and their needs. We start with budget. I'm in finance. I will comb through that thing like picking out lice of a camper. I'll tell you, it is, it is so important we dig into that, that sheet and understand what we're looking at. Good. How much time do I have left, by the way?
That was one minute fifty seconds.
What's up, Ben?
So now you have five minutes and five seconds.
I'm budgeting very well, see? I'm a budget person. That's very good. All right.
Antonia, in 2023, you stated that you supported so-called book banning in some classes. Can you clarify your stance on the restriction or banning of books in schools?
Thank you for this question. I'm not surprised it came up. I get asked this question on social media a lot. Mr. Winston's support team seems to think that this is an important thing for you guys to know about. So for everyone who's at home, please ask your children to step out of the room, because the conversation's going to become very uncomfortable and very inappropriate for certain age groups. So I don't know what conversations you're having with your children, but this one needs to be stepping, those children need to be stepping out of the room. In 2023, when I made those comments, during the meet the candidates, they asked the candidates if they supported book banning, yes or no, especially with the comment that was going around the country with parents showing up to board meetings. I know personally many of those board members, and I knew exactly how they felt about it, and they all lied to you. I'm not a liar. That's the difference of me to a politician. I'm not a liar. So I called them out on it, and people didn't like it. So I called them out on it, and people didn't like it. And the reason why, the book banning is a trigger word that people like to use. You say book banning makes it look like you want to take the Anne Frank Diary books off the shelves. You want to tell everybody that Black History doesn't exist. That is not the book banning I was talking about. So that was taken out of context, again, to further their campaign. That's fine. The book that I was speaking about, and again, which is why I wanted the children to leave the room, is completely inappropriate for a school setting. If you're a parent and you want your child to learn about masturbating and oral sex and doggy style and anal sex, if those are the conversations you want to have with your children, then this is a book that you can get on Amazon. It has a four-and-a-half star review. People have read it. They found it comfortable for their children. Some people have read it and said, my child is not old enough yet, but I'm going to hold on to it until their time. You can go to the public library. You can get it there. I don't feel like a book like that, that is so sexually explicit, where it's encouraging children to go and search porn websites and sexting with people on sex chats online, is appropriate for a school setting. Number one, in New Jersey, sexual consent is 16 years old, but any child found with pornographic images and videos in their phone under the age of 18, even if it's consensual, is illegal. When you put a book like that inside the schools, you allow those students to think it's okay to sext with your friends or your girlfriend or your boyfriend or your boyfriend's boyfriend. I don't know what relationships they would be sharing those images with, because if those children are found with those from their parents, it's a learning conversation. But if you break up with someone or someone wants to go rogue and start sharing those videos and images with other people, that becomes a legal problem. And I don't think that the school should be responsible for encouraging that type of conversation. So when it comes to book banning, no, I don't support book banning. I don't think that you should ever take books away from children when it's for educational purposes. I don't think that we should be teaching children how to masturbate in school. So again, if that is a conversation that you want to have with your kid, that's for you to have a conversation. And I'm not going to say the name of these books, just in case one day a child stumbles on this on YouTube. If you're a parent and you want to know what that book is, feel free to reach out to me. I'm not promoting it here. Again, people do find the book to be helpful after a certain age. If you put it in a public library, that's fine. You cannot put it in a school library and assume a seventh grader is going to understand it in the same way as a 12th grader is. I hope you guys are happy with that answer, because I'm tired of having to answer this question, but that's what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to give Mr. Winston his time, you now have two minutes and 50 seconds.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
Okay. As a board member, you voted to move the fifth-grade students to Hughes. Do you believe this was the right decision? If elected, would you push to move these children back to the elementary schools? Why or why not?
I remember being in fourth grade at Warren Starford, and somebody brought an anatomy book to my table, and I thought it was a pretty big day. I mean, I learned a lot about anatomy that day. Just going to put it out there. So the schools, bringing the fifth graders back. All right, so I did vote, I did vote for all of that, and I think the important thing is all of that was predicated on a lie. The lie was, is that we would have a high school opening in 2025, and it would all work itself out in the end. And that didn't happen. I know that because nobody has dug a hole, so I'm going to assume that the high school won't be ready this year. In answer to your question, I will absolutely start with that the board had kicked the can down the road on an annual basis to avoid putting the referendum on the ballot, where any key board members would also go on that ballot out of fear that they would lose because a referendum would come up. That's what happened. How do I know? Because I was in all the meetings that they would say, not this year. So yeah, I would unwind it. I would chalk it off to thank God Valeski's leaving because he was the one who didn't bring it. We ended up with a whole bunch of trailers. I wouldn't rent Route 18. I would sell it. I would sell it. I would take that money. I would fund special needs. I would fund other programs that we have, and the new administration building would look just like trailers that exist right now in Churchill. They can go sit in the trailers, and when they build their new high school and finally figure it out, why don't we build an administrative wing or spread the administrators out, get them back in the schools? Valeski never had classroom time. They need to see who they're working for, and we have to redefine the job roles of every single administrator in this school. They're not working for anybody else but the students, the staff, and the stakeholders of this community. Culture, our motto, change the board, change the culture, change the results. Except for Dr. Hong and Heather Gwass, the board will be changed this year. I recommend, I thank them both and have them leave. New faces, new opportunities. Every new board member that will be on there will be there. I'll serve one year, nothing more than the role Dr. Hong. Historical knowledge, I'll orchestrate it, create the culture, and then I'm out. That's what we need to do. Yes, I would unwind the entire thing, put everybody back where they were, and chalk it off to really, really bad planning.
Antoinette, your last question, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing our schools in the next five years, and how would you address it?
Hi, welcome back. Like Marion said, I feel like we're beating a dead horse. We all know what the challengers are going to be. Trenton has told us, Valeski has told us, for the next five years, the budget is going to be the biggest challenge, and there is not going to be a funding formula that's going to make everybody happy. On paper, we have a lot, we make, we have a high income. Our property values are going up. These are good things. It means our schools are good. But how long is that going to last? So our biggest issue is trying to make a dollar out of 15 cents. I run a budget with my business. I run a budget in my home. My husband's a construction worker, and I'm an artist. We're not, we're not going to be able to afford 25% in tax increase, which is why I'm advocating for other ways to do it. The biggest challenge that we're going to have is going to be able to preserve the things we have and be okay in limiting things that we want, but we just, we just can't do with, we have to learn how to do without. And again, I can't tell you what those things are until I see what we have in front, what we have in that budget that is not public knowledge. Back in the day, they used to have the budget in front of us at the library, and you can go see all the line items. I know Anna Braun, I don't know if she's still here. She left. She, hi. She mentioned last year that we were paying $20,000 for ceiling tiles. Did we really need that? No. So there are things that you guys were able to see in, you know, in that closed session that we weren't able to see, or especially when you got those things delivered to your house. So the biggest challenge is going to be how to keep our schools excellent with the budget problems that we're going to have. They're not going to go away. You're going to, you should definitely assume you're going to lose 3% next year because that's the max that they're going to be able to cut, and that's what they're going to see for us, because again, our district is fortunate compared to other ones, and they're not going to just hand you over thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, to be able to keep music, sports, and everything else. So the challenge is going to be for the superintendent to be able to preserve those things, and it's going to be the board's job to hold her accountable. So when she does have bad ideas, like putting the fifth grade in Hammershold, the board is going to hold her to a timeline and not just let it go by until the next election and decide to, you know, mention it as a bad idea that they had voted on. So my suggestion to everyone is to say, on top of the board meetings, watch them all, every single one. Don't miss it, even if you have to watch it in parts. They put things in those meetings that is extremely important, and they don't want you watching them, because when you see what's happening, then you start paying attention. Don't wait until you, the next board meeting. Write the email. They read them, even if they're not responding. Hopefully Marion gets that changed. Yeah, the problem is going to be the budget, whether we want to talk about it or not. That is 100% the budget problem that we're going to continue to have for five years. Thank you.
Okay, Jeff, your last question. You have been highly critical of the Board of Education at board meetings. How would you work with your fellow board members if elected, including those you have criticized in the past?
Well, I don't think anybody that I've criticized in the past is there anymore, so I'm going to just wish them well, if that's okay with you. I've answered this question earlier, so I'm going to change gears a little bit. Look, a goal without a plan is a wish. All right, we don't have a plan. As a financial planner, an advisor myself, I manage roughly $800 million. Every piece of that starts with, what is the goal? What are we driving to? And that's something, the question's never really been asked within this district. What are we trying to get to? We are directionless. If you don't know where you're going, Winnie the Pooh says, any path will take you there. So that's where we're at right now. Where do we begin? We start with five priorities. The superintendent needs to have five priorities. Win those priorities, they will be published on the district site. There will be check-in dates, deliverable dates, measurement dates, and completion dates of each of those. The superintendent report will no longer be about fluffy stuff and that. We'll leave that to the student rep.